Good afternoon, I am Kathleen Brown, School Board Chair and the Administrative Informal and Workshop Session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia is hereby convened at 4:00 PM on this 28th day of January 2025. At this time, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the role?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board Chamber are Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, Mr. Bowen Steele, Mr. Callan, Mr. Culpepper, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Felton, Dr. Green, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Rogers.
Thank you. And Ms. Dwyer is on her way and she's in traffic, so she'll be here momentarily. So our first section is School Board Administrative Matters. There's two sign-up sheets I will pass around, the February meetings with the Superintendent and February school visits with the Superintendent. If you want your meeting with Dr. Robertson to be a one-on-one and you don't want a second School Board member, just go ahead and put an X through that, I'll start with it to my right. And a reminder, our statement of economic interest forms are due to the School Board Clerk no later than 5:00 PM Monday, February 3rd, 2025. And then finally, more than one School Board member has asked if there was a space at school, the School Board Building to utilize for School Board duties. Vice Chair Weems and I met with Dr. Robertson and he offered that the School Board Conference Room is only utilized on Mondays by docile and occasionally for School Board Committees. Beginning tomorrow, January 29th, the School Board Conference Room will be available Wednesday through Friday from 10:00 to 4:00 on a first-come, first-served basis. For School Board members to utilize for School Board-related duties, FOIA requirements will still be in order, so make sure that there's not more than two School Board members. The space can be reserved through the School Board Clerk and an email will be sent out to the full Board this evening outlining the process. Do any other School Board members have anything to report? Seeing none, we are going to move on to our first presentation, Focusing on a Competitive Future 2025 Compensation and Salary Structure Market Review, and we welcome Dr. Darnita Trotman, our Chief Human Resources Officer.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Weems, members of the School Board, and Dr. Robertson. Staffing schools remains a persistent challenge in education for school divisions nationwide. Critical shortage positions, including teachers, bus assistants, custodians, and cafeteria assistants continue to pose significant concerns. As we began planning the divisions 2025 to 2026, superintendents' estimates of needs, we do so in face of uncertain funding and intense competition for talent. The education of our students is our driving mission and staying competitive is essential to attracting and retaining a qualified workforce across all positions. This afternoon, Ms. Judith Wood, our Coordinator of Compensation and Classification, will present an overview of the division's compensation programs, followed by a presentation from our compensation consultant partner, Siegel.
Thank you, Dr. Trotman, and good afternoon to everyone. Okay. Okay, it's moving. Today's agenda will begin with the Compensation Philosophy, which outlines the guiding principles behind our compensation structure. This will be followed by a brief overview of Classification and Compensation, which ensures that each job within the division is accurately defined and categorized, and employees are paid fairly. Lastly, we will transition to Siegel, who will update us on our pay scale structures, the current market position for teacher salaries, and provide cost options to enhance the division's competitive stance. Okay. Classification and Compensation are two critical components in how we assess jobs for placement and compensate employees. The Department of Human Resources is responsible for maintaining the classification system for all jobs in accordance with the essential knowledge, skills, and abilities necessary to perform the job. Tied to Classification is a defined compensation program that ensures employees are paid fairly based on the job they are hired to perform. Our Clerk seems to be having some issues. Yes. The Foundation for Developing and Maintaining a Classification and Compensation Strategy is a well-defined compensation philosophy. In short, it defines how employees are paid and how that determination is made. The document before you and in your packet is the School Board's Compensation Philosophy, which was revised September 2022. The Compensation Philosophy guides our hiring practices, pay scale reviews, and job placement assessments. Let's start with Classification, which categorizes jobs based on duties, responsibilities, skills, and qualifications. The process begins with a job analysis to determine the job requirements and the creation of the draft job description. Next, market data from both the public and private sector is applicable or reviewed to ensure competitive pay. Jobs are then evaluated and placed within the appropriate pay structures and ranges. Throughout the review process, internal equity is prioritized to ensure fair and consistent placement of jobs and pay practices. This brings us to Compensation, which refers to the total payments and benefits employees receive for the job they perform. There are three types of compensation, direct, indirect, and non-financial. Direct compensation, which includes monetary rewards such as salaries, wages, bonuses, incentives, and supplemental pay. Indirect compensation, which includes health insurance, retirement plans, and various leave types. And finally, non-financial compensation, or intangible benefits such as the reputation of the school division, job satisfaction, career development opportunities, and a positive and collaborative work environment, just to name a few. An effective classification and compensation system promotes fairness, attracts top talent, and supports the division's overall success. As we move forward in refunding our compensation programs, ensuring they are competitive, equitable, and sustainable within budgetary constraints, I'd like to introduce our Compensation Consultants from Siegel, Dr. Paula Singer, Vice President, along with Andrew Kazinsky, Associate Consultant, and Tarun Ramnath, Associate. Their services have been instrumental in helping the division to align Virginia Beach City Public Schools pay scale with market standards while staying within our fiscal resources. They will provide insights on our instructional pay scale and our unified non-instructional pay scale. Additionally, they will offer options to improve our salaries to remain competitive, supporting our ongoing efforts to recruit and retain all staff. After Siegel's presentation and questions, I will return to review the information provided and the addendum. And I give to you, who is zooming in or through Teams, Dr. Paula Singer.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wood. Madam Chairwoman, Dr. Robertson, members of the School Board, I am delighted to be standing before, well, not standing, sitting before you again now. Tarun and I are all very glad to be here. It's my first visit, Andrew's second visit, and Tarun's first time as a member of our group. Next slide, please. We have a lot to cover in this agenda, and if you have questions, please hold them until the end unless there's a burning need for understanding any concept or finding, in which case it's fine. We will be sharing our recommendations regarding making the Unified and Teacher Pay Scales more competitive with the local market. But we'll start with a recap of the work we've been doing so far at Virginia Beach City Public Schools. We'll talk about our goals for this project, and then spend some time with the Unified and Teacher Pay Scales, looking at possible options for change and the cost implications for both. Next slide, please. So let's talk about our partnership. Let me start by acknowledging the knowledge and expertise of the school's compensation expert, Ms. Trudy Wood. She added so much value and expertise to the work we do together. She has clearly kept the division's pay plan up-to-date and in compliance. I would also like to share our appreciation of Mrs. Woodhouse, Mrs. Tate, and Dr. Trotman, who were supportive and provided input along every step of the work. Our first project with the school system was our largest one. It was actually a two-phase compensation study where we first looked at working very closely with the School Board to update your compensation philosophy. The second was a comprehensive assessment of how the division's pay plan compared to local school divisions in the area with specific emphasis on Chesapeake. That has been a goal of all three projects, to meet and hopefully align with or exceed the pay rates offered by our nearest peer competitor for teacher talent. So, I'm sorry, I have a little computer thing here. Um, next slide, please. Okay. Can you take me back one slide, please? I don't know what the... I want to make sure I've got all this. Okay. Thank you. And so, as I was saying, we work to complete its following initiative, just the compensation. We assess the competitiveness of the positions to make sure that Virginia Beach stood in comparison to the other school systems, and also maintain equity with the other employees. And also, we implemented a 1.5-step increment for all experience levels on the instructional teacher pay scale, and continued to recommend increasing salary level rate, entry level rates based on available funding. Next slide, please. To continue, we implemented consistence across all grades in the non-instructional Unified Paid Scale. So what we did here was we raised the minimum wage for our lowest-paid employees who offer very, very strong contributions to the school system, and we created a new grade level for select professional healthcare physicians. And we will talk more about some of the other things, especially around these step increments, and Andrew will be covering a lot of that. So we see your Compensation Philosophy, which I know is in your board packet, and you had an opportunity to look at, but just to give you an overview and a nutshell explanation of what the philosophy says, it's basically to attract and retain a highly qualified and diverse workforce, to ensure fair and consistent pay practices, comply with applicable laws and regulations, and operate within the constraints of fiscal resources while also balancing educational goals in order to achieve the educational goals. So next slide, please. So the goals we had were three-fourths coming into this project. First, to develop the Unified Pay Scales costing scenario, standardize the percentages. So as I mentioned before, last time, the School Board recommended percentage increase of 1% between years one and 14, years of experience, and then 1.5% for 15 and over. And we're going to be talking about what that would look like here. Review the pay scale and make sure that every eligible employee is able to obtain at least a 3% increase, and the same for teachers. Dr. Robertson was very wanting. It was important for him to make sure everybody got a good salary increase. Also want to make the entry rates of teachers competitive in the local market, specifically as compared to Chesapeake Public Schools, and that's an important criteria for the work we do. So why, why, why? Again, supporting student success, the district sought to update the pay plan to enhance competitiveness, especially again with Chesapeake Public Schools, fill vacancy and promote recruitment and retention, with the goal of always ensuring fairness and equity, move up from our seventh place in the local market for teacher salary, and improve our recruitment and retention efforts. I will now turn this presentation over to my colleague, Andrew Kazinsky, who will walk you through the options and scenarios, along with the cost to implement both the teacher and Unified Pay Scale change. Next slide, please. You're on mute, Andrew.
Of course I am, okay. Thank you very much. So the first pay scale that we're going to be looking at is the Unified Pay Scale. As a reminder, this scale includes the non-teaching positions. We're going to look at two options for updates to the salary scale itself and the associated impacts on our costs. So if we could go to the next slide, please. All right. The Unified Salary Scale utilizes grades that start with grade U7, and it goes through grade U28. So for purposes of this overview, we're going to be looking at the impacts of these structure change options on grade U7. This grade includes critical positions such as bus assistants, custodian, one-staff, and cafeteria assistants to give you a sense of the types of roles that will be impacted by updates to this grade. So from left to right, you'll see years of service, the current pay rate for each year, current step increment, which is the percent increase in pay from one year to the next, the newly proposed pay rate, and proposed step increment. This first option, which we refer to as Option A, includes increasing the structure by 1.5% for years 0 through 14, and this is highlighted in the vertical green box. As you can see, the current step increments are 1% in years 0 through 14 under the current step increment column. Years 15 and up stay at 1.5% for both the current and the proposed structures. So at a minimum, this supports an average 3% increase for all eligible employees, and this step increase will equalize the percentages for all steps in the structure and was part of the recommendation during the 2023-2024 study. If you go to the next slide. So this slide highlights Option B. The headers for this slide are the same. Key difference here is that this option provides a 3% increase to the structure as opposed to a 1.5% increase in Option A, but it keeps the step increases for years 0 through 14 at 1%, and that you can see with the vertical red box on your screen. This option supports a minimum of a 3% increase for all eligible employees as well, but the rate for growth for employees is slower due to the difference in salaries compounding at 1.5% for years 0 through 14 with Option A, and only 1% for years 0 through 14 with Option B. So if we go to the next slide, this slide lays out the cost for both of these options. The cost for Option A is roughly $20.7 million, while Option B is $10.7 million, roughly. This $10 million difference can be attributed to the compounding effect of the change to 1.5% for years 0 through 14, and although more expensive, it does address the foundational issue with the salary scale as it's currently constructed. Option B does provide an initial boost to pay by moving the scale itself 3%, but in effect, kind of kicks the can down the road by not addressing the underlying issue with years 0 through 14. They do both, however, support an average 3% increase for eligible employees. Next slide, please. The other area of focus for this presentation is regarding an assessment of the teacher pay scale. So we're going to review recent changes to the teacher's scale, Virginia Beach's current competitive position relative to your peers, present options we have modeled and associated employee impacts and cost implications. So the next slide, if you can go to that. So this first slide shows the movement of the teacher pay scale over its most recent iterations. So you'll see approximately 30 months ago, the scale had inconsistent steps between years of service, resulting in the orange line that you see here. Next, you will see the result of Siegel and Virginia Beach's first engagement, where we streamlined the increments for the years of service, resulting in the more consistent trajectory you'll see in July of 2023, and that's represented by that green line there. However, the initial starting salary was not increased at that time, which resulted in a less competitive starting rate relative to Virginia Beach's peers. So the starting pay was increased in January of 2024, resulting in an increase to $53,005. Most recently, was updated to $54,065 this past August. So over the past three years, the entry rate for teachers has increased approximately 4%. However, this current school year alone, Virginia Beach's competitors increased their entry rate from anywhere between 3% to 8%. So, you know, on a whole, while there's still work to be done in terms of setting starting salaries in order to stay competitive, these adjustments have seen a positive impact on the overall salaries for teachers. So the best example we can see of this is at the 15-year mark, where teachers' pay rates have moved from $56,587 to $67,594. That's an increase of $11,000, or approximately 19.5% increase over a period of two and a half years. All right, next slide, please. So on this slide, you will see Virginia Beach's current pay rates at five-year intervals compared to current peer districts. So those peers being Chesapeake, Hampton, Newport News, Norfolk, Portsmouth, and Suffolk. So you'll notice that currently, Virginia Beach is in seventh place for year zero, that's your entry level, starting pay, sixth place for year five, third place for years 10 through 25, and then fourth place for year 30. Additionally, we have a comparison to where we stand in relation to Chesapeake, as well as where we were last year. So we've made some proportional gains to where we stood in 2023, 2024, but we're still behind. So you can see in 2023, 2024, we were 2.57% behind Chesapeake. We're now currently roughly 2% behind. Another quick item to note here, you'll see in year zero, that entry level pay, that Portsmouth is currently in first place due to the recent front-loading of entry level pay rates for teachers, but after that initial starting rate, you'll see Chesapeake in first place for all the remaining intervals. So if we could go to the next slide, this slide represents Virginia Beach's current pay position for teachers relative to your peers. Virginia Beach here is represented by the dotted line, and current peers are represented by all the others, and there's a key for each institution below. In particular, you'll see Chesapeake at the top of the graph for years of service 5 through 30, and that's represented by that solid maroon line that you'll see sort of above all of the others. As you can see, Virginia Beach is in last place for entry level starting rates, finds itself in the middle of the pack, so to speak, by year five, and that continues through year 30. And so we wanted to start with this slide, as it helps level-set current conditions as we look at the various options that we've developed over the next few slides. So on the next slide, we have what we're referring to as Option A. An Option A is a 5% increase to entry level pay for the teacher's salary scale. And so what we've done here is we've estimated Virginia Beach's competitive position with this 5% increase, and also assuming a 3% increase to all of your current peers. So we don't know what increases they'll be providing at this time, and so we've estimated 3% based on some previous year's increases. Virginia's, Virginia Beach's current rates are represented with the orange dotted line, while the estimated 5% increase is represented with the blue dash line that you see. So this estimate essentially directly aligns us with Chesapeake, which you can see in the maroon line that now is kind of underneath Virginia Beach's blue dashed line here. So if you recall, we're currently 2% behind Chesapeake right now, so if we were to increase our rates by 5%, and then increase theirs by 3%, we'd have roughly identical pay scales. Another item to note, you'll see the two schools that start pay most aggressively, those being Portsmouth and Norfolk, become less competitive over time with Virginia Beach pulling ahead, so to speak, around year five. A 5% increase here would move the initial starting rate for teachers from $54,065 to $56,769. If we could go to the next slide. So this slide highlights the value of the increases to the, to the structure at five-year intervals. You know, looking, walking from left to right, you'll see the years of service in five-year intervals there, the current step value of those years of service, the proposed step value, and then the value of the increase of that step. So entry level pay, for instance, as we were just discussing, for teachers here would increase the starting rate by $2,704. On a whole, on average, that's an increase of 6.5% for teachers. On the next slide, so this, this slide should look familiar to Option A, with the exception of that entry level increase. So this option reflects our competitive position with the 4% increase as opposed to Option A's 5%. A key item to note here, Chesapeake is now approximately 1% ahead of Virginia Beach, again estimating a 3% increase for them, and again, you'll see that kind of maroon line now sitting back up sort of at the top of the, of the graph here. A 4% increase here would move teachers' starting pay from $54,065 to $56,228. On the next slide, again, this should look familiar as well. This shows the dollar difference per step with a 4% increase as opposed to 5. So again, looking at that entry level increase, we'll see an increase to teachers' pay of On average, this is an increase for teachers of 5.5%. Next slide, please. And so finally, we have an Option C. Again, this should look very similar to Options A and Options B, with the exception of that entry level increase. This option reflects Virginia Beach's current competitive position with a 3% increase as opposed to Option A's 5%, and Option B's 4%. You'll see that Virginia Beach's blue dashed line continues to shift down relative to your peers. A 3% increase here would move the initial starting pay for teachers from $54,065 to And then finally, this next slide here for Option C, again, similar to previous slides, and this shows the dollar difference per step with that 3% increase. And again, first year here, we're talking about $1,622. dollars as far as the value of an increase to the step here, and this would be an average increase for teachers of four point five percent. This next slide pulls together all of the options listed in the previously, three slides so that you can see them side by, side by side. On the left-hand side, again, you have the years of service, and then you have all three options laid out in the order of the percentage increases discussed previously. So again, option A at five percent, option B at four, and option C at three. Starkest difference, differences obviously can be seen by comparing option A to option C. For example, at, at thirty years, there's a one thousand six hundred eighty-nine dollar difference between the four thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollar increase for option A and the two thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollar increase for option C. Go to the next slide, please. This next slide provides a couple examples of the types of increases a teacher could expect to see based on the various options that we've presented. This slide illustrates the movement of teachers from the current pay scale to the, to the proposed options for each of these scales. It includes each of the proposed options plus a step for an additional year of service. The first example that we have provided is the increase a new teacher could expect to see moving from their first year to one year of experience. And so what you'll see, and this is highlighted in the red box here, is that a teacher's entry level pay would increase from fifty-four thousand sixty-five dollars to fifty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty. That results in a six point five eight percent increase or three thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars annually. So option B, which are those middle columns and are highlighted by the green box there, would be increasing teachers' entry level pay from that fifty-four thousand sixty-five to fifty-seven thousand seventy-one dollars. That's an increase of about five point five percent or three thousand dollars annually. Excuse me. And then option C, which is highlighted in that, that purple box there, is the increase a teacher could expect to see moving from fifty-four thousand sixty-five to fifty-six five twenty-three. Again, that's a four point five percent increase and a dollar amount increase of approximately twenty-five hundred dollars. So if we could go to the next slide, so, so finally, right, what this is telling us and then what we're kind of, you know, moving towards here is overall cost implications of each one of these options. So option A, that five percent entry level increase has an overall cost of, we'll say, twenty-six point seven million dollars. Option B, that four percent increase is twenty-two point five million dollars. And option C, which is the three percent increase, is eighteen point four million dollars. All of these options do support an overall three percent increase for all eligible employees. So at this, this point, I'm going to turn this back over to Dr. Singer to review the summary of options, and we can address any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. I lost PowerPoint. That one, sorry, I'm having horrible computer problems this afternoon, but I've got it. Summary of options. As you've heard, and I know you've heard a lot, there's a lot of options here, and as you can see from the price tag, there's big variances in the possible choices you can make in terms of what it's going to cost the school system. All the options align with the goal of a minimum increase of three percent for all eligible employees. That's on the unified as well as the teacher-based scale. Both options in the unified pay scale provide an increase to entry level pay, and they do as well in the teacher pay scale. All the options, both for the unified as well as all options for the teacher pay scale, provide years of experience, provides a step for years of experience for eligible employees. As Andrew mentioned, and as you can see, big price differentials, you know, we don't take ten million dollars lightly at Segal or frankly even a million dollars. And so it really comes down to either taking care of it now or kicking the can down the road and coming back to it again next year, next time, or over time. So we are now happy to take any questions that you have.
Are there any questions?
We know it'll take some time to sift through, and I hope you all had time to at least look at it in advance because of the complexity of it.
Thank you. Ms. Rogers?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I guess my biggest question is, should we decide to kick this down the can? Is this going to put us in, in even bigger disadvantage with our competitors in the area?
Yes, potentially. Well, Andrew would say potentially, I'll say yes.
I see that the information was created to seek to make a comparison between the localities in which we're surrounded or by which we're surrounded as well as a comparison with Chesapeake, but it seems as though really all the emphasis is being placed on a comparison head-to-head with Chesapeake. And if that's an accurate understanding, I'm on slide twenty, and this is the slide that I picked up on Friday because that's where all my notes are. So it may not coincide with the same twenty that you're on, but it's a market assessment findings, current state, which shows the five-year comparisons and all of the cities in, in Hampton Roads. My question is this, let's take a ten-year rank and we see that Virginia Beach is ranked number three with a figure of sixty-two, seven forty-five, and Chesapeake is ranked number one with a figure of sixty-four, oh forty-five. If we said, let's beat Chesapeake, let's go head-to-head and take them down and obtain the number one position, and let's do so with a number of sixty-eight thousand, and Chesapeake said, we'll see you one and raise you one, and we'll go to seventy thousand, do we end up just being a dog chasing its tail, going after Chesapeake every time they raise the bar and exceeds us? Does that serve as the justification for time to pony up and we've got to be number one again? Do we end up just chasing after these things, and is that the appropriate way to approach this problem?
Well, first I want to say that not only Chesapeake, we look at all the other six, I believe, of the five or six to make sure that we're in line. For instance, we even looked at Portsmouth, which has a higher entry level rate than, than you do because they front-loaded their money at the entry level and then tapered off by ten years down the road. Do you have the possibility of leapfrogging? Yeah, you do. It could happen, but I don't think it will because nobody's got that much money to keep doing it and doing it like that. And I'd venture to guess it levels off. And thirdly, that's why Andrew showed you the slide that had the three percent differential, making assumption that Chesapeake is going to increase three percent, of which we have no clue, that's clearly conjecture, and to see what it looks like then if they had that increase and you gave another increase. And you don't want to fall too far behind. I mean, on one hand, it's the leapfrogging on one side, on the other hand, it's falling behind more and more. And you take a new teacher, no, I'm not, you take a new teacher coming out of school, and they'll look at, do I want to go here where it's fifty-four? Do I want to go here where it's fifty-eight? And a twenty-two-year-old, since it's so close in proximity, might be very likely to go for the higher salary. I think once they're older perhaps and they're more interested in benefits and so forth, it might be a little different. Andrew, anything you want to add? And certainly Dr. Tropman or Judy.
I guess the only thought that I still have on this issue is the fact that the justification is driven by somebody else who's higher than us as opposed to trying to create a place where we pay a fair wage for a fair day's effort, if you will. And to just say, well, if somebody else is raising the bar and we're chasing after them, is that the right mindset that we should bring to this process? It's really more of an open-ended question that I'm just hypothesizing.
Well, I'll tell you, when you look at your compensation philosophy, it talks about being competitive with the local market and also internal equity. So those are two things that stand out. Judy talked about the intangibles that comprise compensation, and we think that is so important, a very important thing in terms of the culture, the career development. Yes, we want to have it fair, we want a culture that is suited to the instructional as well as the non-instructional workforce, make people fall in love with the place and want to stay. It's both definitely fair and equitable.
And currently, we are seven. So when we look at where we fall, I'm sorry, currently, we are, we rank seven. So when we look at where we fall among our competitors, we are, we, our reputation precedes us, but we're seven. And so we do look at all of our surrounding competition because quite frankly, we're all competing for the same staff. We're competing for the same, teachers and research tells us that the teacher prep programs, the numbers of enrollments have declined. So we're competing for the same bucket of teachers, and with us ranking last, we do have to keep a pulse on all of our competitors.
And if I could add one thing, the, the HR in me won't allow me not to also indicate that the cost of living in Virginia Beach has to be factored into the salary that we also pay our employees. And so when you can, whether it's rent, buy, or you currently own, when you're factoring that into what it is that you make, it becomes even more challenging for us. And when I was in HR, we would hear, most people do not want to commute, they want a short distance. When gas prices go up, you know, it's great when it's low, but when it goes up, commuting is quite costly. And we often heard from our employees that whether it's lack of availability, but mostly lack of available affordable housing also is part of that choice. And so it's not just, do we one up one or other? When we put all of our packages together to include the cost of living, do we factor in that makes Virginia Beach the number one choice? And unfortunately, that is not the case when you look at the cost of housing or even renting an apartment in Virginia Beach, and you probably hear that from your constituents. So I just wanted to add that piece as well.
Thank you. Ms. Monik?
So I look at this completely, I, I look at this differently. I, I don't look at this as necessarily competition between the cities, although it is, but I think now in two thousand twenty-five, we're slapped with the reality that we have, teachers have been woefully underpaid since the beginning of time, and now we have to fix it because we're in a place right now where people just aren't choosing the teaching profession And that's really how we have to view this, and we're going to have to like really, I mean, I'm looking, I'm looking at our, our CFO and I'm thinking, do we have twenty million dollars? And we're going to ask you that, but this is seri, this is serious because beyond, this is what's going to drive our work moving forward. Do we have the money for academies and transportation for middle school sports? Do we have the money for all of the resources that we offer in Virginia Beach? And that's where I see the difference, right? Like, when you compare us to other school divisions, we offer so much more. There are so many more opportunities, not only for our students but for our teachers. And we just have our stuff together, and the cost of living is very expensive. I can tell you, it's why Andrew Milnick moved out of Virginia Beach, and he lives in Richmond City. He lives on Broad Street in a brand-new apartment building and pays almost nothing for it, and he's making more than these teachers are. And we, we have to find a way to do better to keep our people here. It is highly competitive, like you said, because we are all messing with the same pot. And I'm hoping, I'm glad to see it squeezed in a little bit, like, I'm hoping people might look at Chesapeake and Virginia Beach or Chesapeake and, and the other side of the tunnel and say, do I want to sit in tunnel traffic? Or, or could the difference between here and Chesapeake be gas money? So, yeah, I'll be, keep my eye on you, Ms. Fain.
Ms. Felton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Ms. Woodhouse, we did answer a couple more questions that I was going to ask about the cost of living and taxes, what they all, and the presentation was wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate your coming forward. And we, we said a couple of things that really hit home with me, fairly pay and equity. And I hope that we aren't looking at it as playing leapfrog because we eyes so much of our teachers so many times, so often. And when I look back at when, and people say you're beating the dead horse, but when I look at COVID and how Virginia Beach came through, we were one of the only divisions that were on top of making sure that all of our students had the information and the components that they need to continue the education. Everyone else was scrambling, not just from hearsay. That was calls to me from Suffolk, Chesapeake, and Norfolk, how are you guys doing this? My concern is that I hope we're not playing leapfrog. It's about retention, sustainability, and equity for all of our teachers. We do ask a lot of them. They are far behind. When I got on the school board, they were dealing with a pay raise or pay that stopped, that capped in two thousand and eight. And every, every time someone think they give them a one percent, that's great, but when Ms. Woodhouse said that taxes and everything is, is added into, into that as well, I won't go on because I get a little bit sensitive about this because our teachers give a lot. They work hard, and they look for us to respect them and make sure that they understand without teachers, we have no functioning school without those instructors. My question to you is, you're using the word eligible employees. What is your criteria when you say all those employees that are eligible for a raise? Could you explain to that?
Absolutely. I'm going to ask Ms. Wood or Dr. Tropman to, to respond to that. We've talked about that a fair bit, but yeah, why don't you take it?
Absolutely.
Okay, so depending on how the employee comes into the school division, we say eligible because at the time that they come into the school division, they may not be eligible to remove a step on the pay scale to gain in a year of experience. So that's why we use the word eligible. If they come in after February first, they don't gain a step. So that kind of, that's what we mean by eligible. Oh, a part-time employees.
Temporary employees.
Correct.
So employees that aren't full-time, that could be some of those factors which would make them ineligible.
I'm going to circle back to you in just a second because we have board members that haven't spoken, and then I'll give you an opportunity. Ms. Dwyer?
There it is. So we definitely need to invest in our teachers. I don't have any problem with that, and I think if we were all being honest enough, the cost of living has gone up tremendously for everyone. And our teachers do work hard, and good teachers make good schools, and happy teachers make great schools. So I want to get behind them. I'm also looking at the number of vacancies and what that costs in the long run to try to cover every day. I am sure that becomes very costly. And not to, and not to forget, it's, it's a lot of extra work, and we don't need any vacancies, we don't need any more. And so I'm going to definitely get behind the teachers. They deserve it, they work hard, and they are probably one of our most valuable investments. And they are probably one of our most valuable investments.
Thank you, Ms. Dwyer. Mr. Cumming?
Yeah, thank you for sharing. And just to quickly echo a lot of the sentiment that, you know, there's a, the teacher shortage is real. We're all competing for a small bucket of folks. And I think that's, you know, how we see the wage continue to climb, 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 is that if we want to be the first destination of top talent, then I think we have to be extremely competitive with starting wages and whatnot. And so I appreciate the thoughts, efforts, and put into this. My question really is just, I, I think what would be helpful on a resource like this is bucketing the number of staff into some of the different categories because as I'm going through and looking, you know, I'm kind of curious, like, how many staff do we have in the zero to five? How many do we have in five to 10, and so on? I think that would be just kind of helpful to conceptualize, just kind of like the cost and investment and whatnot. And then I'd also personally, I would just love to hear maybe, you know, how recruitment, you know, what have we seen from recruitment in our pipeline with people getting lost to other schools and them saying, well, pay's not competitive or something like that? Like, is there kind of a story in the back of the mind or something like that? I'd be kind of curious to hear if there, if we, if you don't have one on the spot, you don't have that one on the spot, but down the road maybe. And that's all.
We can provide that information for you.
Dr. Green?
Thank you, Ms. Tropman and Ms. Wood. Mine is kind of a question, but more of a comment from having been on the other side and working with you all quite a bit on the compensation in, in certain areas. Given that we have a lot of specialized staff in this school division, such as our school counselors, school psychologists, social workers, and, and I know a lot of our people, staff who are clinicians, how will this new scale benefit them? Those that are in those specialized areas such as psychologists, social workers? And I realize school counselors are on the scale with teachers. So any consideration for them as well? Because we lose a lot of clinicians, as you know, because they can leave us and triple their salary.
Yes. They are a part of the unified pay scale. Two years ago, maybe two years ago, we created a professional level scale for behavior intervention, occupational therapists, those types of positions, and they rest there. So the information that he shared tonight about the unified pay scale would definitely impact those employees as well.
Yeah, and in addition, we created a new salary grade two years ago called, in the professional scale, to look at those occupations that you're talking about, nurses, physical therapists, occupational therapists, and so forth. We also did, in addition to this study, we looked at 15 other select positions. And we did a market study to see how, how those job ranges compared to those in peer organizations as well as outside of peer organizations because you don't just compete with school systems for that type of talent. So that was, is provided and something that'll be available to you soon if you're interested.
Also, on that line of the unified pay scale, our lowest wage earners are also on the unified pay scale. So I want to bring that to your attention as well. And there's not a gentleman's agreement like we have with teachers. So our lowest wage workers could potentially go to another school division, and we don't want that to happen. We want to advocate for all positions, whether unified or the instructional pay scale.
Definitely.
Ms. Reams?
Yes, thank you. I would also be interested in the data that Mr. Cummins has requested, if you can get that exactly. Of the applicants who apply, how many or the percentage are saying, I can't work in Virginia Beach because I can't afford to live here? Or I'm going to Chesapeake because, you know, if you have that. All right, also, you know, just a comment too about we're, we're competing with the same pool, and that pool has gotten so much smaller. If you remember, a few years ago, several universities and/or colleges in Virginia closed down their whole education program. You cannot even major. Because I know some of my daughter's friends were going to attend Virginia Tech, and they completely closed down that. So it, it is very problematic, so. And then just a quick question. What do, what do you mean by internal equity? Is that with compression or what, what is internal equity exactly?
When we place-
Go ahead. Yeah, I was just going to ask you if you wanted to take it. Go take it.
When we place employees on the pay scale, we look at their job. We look at the jobs that they've held, and we provide year-for-year experience. So we give them experience for every year. We want to make sure that we're consistent with that. So that is the internal equity. Making sure we are consistent, making sure our jobs are properly aligned, they're similar. That's what we mean by internal.
Great. Thank you so much.
Ms. Rogers?
Thank you. Dr. Robertson, you might not have this information, but I'm going to put you on the spot. I apologize. Do you have an idea of our non-instructional vacancies as far as our bus drivers, our custodial staff, all of that?
Yeah, so there, after these questions, we have several more slides to give you updated information on that information.
I didn't see the, those vacancies. My apologies. Then the other question would be, do we have an idea as to if we have, like, how have our vacancies, have they been increasing per year? Or are they staying about the same, like, for both instructional and non-instructional? Have our issues with the vacancies been increasing?
You guys are going to be able to answer that one as well. I can speak to the last two years, but I can't give you a trend over, beyond the last two years. I don't know if Ms. Woodhouse can. But we'll get that information for you.
We'll get it, right.
Okay. I just want to remind colleagues, this presentation still has more left, and we have a budget presentation after this, so. Okay. So any, any more thoughts, Ms. Felton?
I do. I just want to make one thought, just maybe you might have to email me on it, that we're going through this budget, budget process, and I know that we have a future teacher component. So are we planning? I do know two students almost ready to transition back. And they plan, the promise that we made them, you know, go through this program and you will have, you're guaranteed a job. So, so I see Ms. Woodhouse shaking her head. So are we, are we focusing in and are we budgeting in those students that will be coming back for our future teachers? I need to know that because I'm proud of that program, and I like what they have done. And from my understanding, we're the only one in the division that have that program. That means that we have teachers that we can, that we're going to have. That's going to be ours. So what are we doing? How are we planning for that?
Oh, homegrown. You're excited, and we are too. And so staffers go out to schools and meet with our children who are in the program. They come here, get badges before they go out. It's an awesome program. And yes, you all will see towards the end of the school year that we recognize those when they get their certificates and they go off to college, and we monitor them all four years. And we invite them back. The contract is signed. So we get our teachers, our babies who become our teachers back every year.
And then the, do you guys want to go on with the rest of the presentation? Thank you.
And so to conclude tonight's presentation, we would like to provide the school board with some additional information as you begin the process of reviewing budgetary considerations. So in looking at our current instructional vacancies, as of January 17th, we have a total of, we had a total of 58 instructional vacancies. And mid-year instructional retirements and resignations create challenges in backfilling positions and recruiting teachers for open positions during this time of year. In looking at our hard-to-staff positions, bus assistants work with special education bus drivers to ensure the safe transportation of our students to and from school. As indicated in the chart, bus assistants rank number four for entry-level salaries in the local area and below the average hourly rate of $1,580 for the school division survey. The entry-level hourly rate of $1,530 puts us behind Hampton, Norfolk, and Chesapeake. Last year, we ranked number four as well. Cafeteria assistants rank number two for entry-level salaries, slightly above the average hourly rate of $1,527 among the survey school divisions, an improvement from last year's ranking of third place. The entry-level hourly rate of $1,530 puts us behind Norfolk. Virginia Beach City Public Schools maintained its second-place ranking for custodian one positions, slightly above the average hourly rate for the division survey. And as a side note, Hampton outsourced this service for several years before they restored their positions this year. Finally, competitive compensation is vital to attracting and retaining top talent, and educational allowances play a crucial role in recruiting and supporting teachers and staff. Since 2021, the administration and school board have worked to align these allowances with those of surrounding school divisions by allocating funds to increase their values when available. While funds were allocated for the 23-24 school year, no additional increases were made for the current school year due to funding constraints. To achieve the VBCPS competitive targets as shown in the, in the chart, the amount displayed on the slide will be required. In conclusion, the information shared tonight underscores our market position in these critical areas and the importance of remaining competitive to attract and retain top talent for all positions. As the school board prepares for budget deliberations in the coming weeks, we trust that, that the information shared tonight with you will be helpful in supporting informed and strategic decision-making.
Thank you. Are there any final questions? You can always email those to Dr. Robertson as needed and can get those answers. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. In closing, I just, I wanted to signal my support for continuing to make sure that we're looking at those, you know, lowest-paid positions. Our, our teaching staff is very important, but our custodians, our bus drivers assistants, our food service workers, they do an excellent job each and every day, making sure that our division ticks. And so, you know, we talk a lot about teacher pay, and that's very important too. But so are all those other support positions. So thank you so much for your time. And next, we welcome Crystal Pate, our Chief Financial Officer for our preliminary operating budget presentation.
So good afternoon, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Ream, school board members, and Dr. Robertson. This presentation will provide an overview of key items related to the operating budget currently under development. Our goal is to keep you informed about these important updates and ensure transparency as we move forward in the budget planning process. In the final portion of the presentation, Mr. Freeman will provide an update on the capital improvement program, offering insights into its status and upcoming priorities. This slide outlines this afternoon's agenda. We will address questions posed by school board members from the meeting two weeks ago, provide a high-level look at unfunded mandates, and revisit the budget reductions implemented during the fiscal year 2025 budget development cycle. We will refresh you on the revenue comparison, cover budget priorities and balancing, and finally, we will outline the next steps before transitioning to Mr. Freeman. As we move into this next section, please note that some of the figures in the section on positions above the SOQ have been updated since you received the distribution of your initial school board packet. The only question we did receive from the school board was what positions exceed SOQ or standards of quality? This information was also provided last year during budget development. Before addressing this question, let's revisit key points from the J-Lock report related to SOQ, which I shared with you a couple of weeks ago. According to the J-Lock report, Virginia's SOQ formula provides substantially less funding than what divisions actually spend or need to meet benchmarks. The formula underestimates both the number of K-12 staff needed as well as the true cost of compensation at the division level. Additionally, it fails to adequately account for higher-need students, including at-risk students, special education students, and English-language learners. Funding for these student populations falls below the levels deemed necessary by cost studies conducted in other states. With this context, the next few slides outline several positions that Virginia Beach City Public Schools has staffed for years to meet school needs that exceed the funding formula provided by the state under the SOQ. This slide highlights that state funding provides one full-time library media assistant or LMA for every middle and high school library at 750 students. Recognizing the vital role LMAs play in supporting literacy instruction, library media specialists, teachers, and students, Virginia Beach City Public Schools has allocated funding for 54 LMAs beyond the SOQ requirement. This represents a reduction of five FTEs compared to fiscal year 2025. The decrease is due to the elimination of three LMAs at the elementary level during the fiscal year 2025 budget development, necessitated by budget adjustments tied to the city's 2 cent reduction in the real estate tax rate. At the middle school level, there is a reduction of two positions as Bayside Middle School and Kim'sville Middle School are no longer funded above SOQ levels. Both schools are projected to have enrollments exceeding 750 students in fiscal year 2026, factoring in the consolidation of Bayside Six with Bayside Middle. The total cost of funding these additional yet critical roles is approximately $2.5 million. This slide also outlines the essential responsibilities handled by LMAs. And I'll give you a moment to review. Shifting to the position of library media specialist or LMS, we are allocating 2.5 FTEs above the SOQ requirement. While the total number of physicians in this category did not change from fiscal year 2025, the makeup of the physicians did. For fiscal year 2025, we reported a .5 FT above SOQ for one elementary school. In fiscal year 2026, there are no positions above SOQ for elementary. In fiscal year 2025, we had no positions above SOQ for middle school. And in fiscal year 2026, we have one LMS at Corporate Landing Middle. And in fiscal year 2025, we reported two positions above SOQ for the high school level, one for Renaissance Academy and one for the Tech and Career Ed Center. For fiscal year 2026, we have .5 LMS for Renaissance Academy and one at the Tech and Career Ed Center. The estimated cost for this support is $254,382. And this slide also outlines the key responsibilities of an LMS. And I'll give you a moment. Regarding assistant principals, the SOQ provides funding for .5 at elementary schools with up to 600 students and one full-time assistant principal with 900 students. This represents a significant shortfall in state funding as a full-time assistant principal is essential for schools with over 300 students. Per state code, school divisions are permitted to assign assistant principals to schools based on the areas of greatest need, regardless of whether the schools are elementary or secondary. To address this, we are funding an additional 83.5 FTEs above the SOQ requirement at a cost of nearly $10 million. This reflects a net decrease of two positions from fiscal year 2025. The reduction includes four FTEs cut at the high school level in fiscal year 2025 to balance the budget under the constraints stemming from the city's 2 cent reduction in the real estate tax rate, offset by an increase of two FTEs above SOQ at the elementary level due to projected enrollment shifts across various schools for fiscal year 2026. This slide also outlines the essential responsibilities of an assistant principal, and I'll give you a moment to review. Now turning to clerical support. We believe that the SOQ standard falls significantly short. They allocate 1.0 clerical FTE for 300 students, two for 600 students, and so on, without considering the numerous critical tasks these individuals handle daily in our schools. By relying solely on enrollment numbers, this SOQ standard overlooks the essential role clerical staff play in providing high-quality customer service and fulfilling unfunded mandates such as processing student records, engaging with parents, staff, and students, and performing the myriad additional duties- and performing the myriad additional duties required to ensure schools run efficiently. To address this gap, we fund approximately 214.1 FTEs, FTE clerical positions, at an approximate cost of $14.1 million. This reflects a reduction of four positions compared to fiscal year 2025. The decrease includes three positions eliminated due to the consolidation of Bayside Six and Bayside Middle School, and a .5 FT removed at an elementary school that no longer exceeds SOQ requirements due to an increase in enrollment. Additionally, .5 FT reflects an adjustment tied to fiscal year 2024 positions for this exercise rather than 2025. So know that the budget allocations were accurate, and the real change in this category should be a reduction of 3.5 FTEs. And I will give you a moment to review the essential responsibilities of these staff members. Returning to school counselors, the SOQ provides funding for one counselor per three hundred and twenty-five students in grades K through twelve. We are providing funding for 57.1 FTEs above the SOQ requirement at a cost of $5.6 million. This reflects a reduction of 11.8 FTEs compared to fiscal year 2025. This reduction is due to an overall increase in enrollment, which resulted in more positions being covered under the SOQ requirement, thereby decreasing the number of positions we fund above the standard. It is important to emphasize that no school counselor's positions were cut. All schools have maintained their staffing levels, and the changes reflect adjustments driven by enrollment increase and compliance with the SOQ standard. Counselors play a vital role in addressing the diverse needs of our students and staff as highlighted in their essential responsibilities listed on this slide. In the area of technology support, the SOQ funds two FTEs per one thousand students. Given the size of high schools and our commitment as a one-to-one division to the meaningful use of technology to support teaching and learning, we fund an additional sixty-eight positions. These positions include a mix of technology support technicians, or TSTs, and instructional technology specialists, or ISTs, at an approximate cost of $5.3 million. This reflects a reduction of two positions compared to fiscal year 2025, one TST and one IST made to balance the budget due to the city's two-cent reduction in the real estate tax rate. The essential responsibilities for both roles are detailed on this slide, and I'll give you a moment. Another key area of investment beyond the SOQs is in elementary resource teacher positions, specifically in the areas of art, music, and physical education. We fund an additional 54.2 positions above the SOQ requirements because we recognize the importance of providing a holistic education for our students and families. This represents a .4 FTE increase from fiscal year 2025 due to enrollment shifts. The cost of this investment is approximately $5 million. The essential responsibilities unique to these positions are outlined on this slide. Lastly, we provide funding for an additional 24.6 reading specialists at an approximate cost of $2.4 million. This represents an increase of 10.5 FTEs compared to fiscal year 2025, driven primarily by changes in the staffing standard. In fiscal year 2025, we only reported elementary reading specialists above the SOQ requirement as the standard required one reading specialist per elementary school based on the discretion of the local school board. For fiscal year 2026, the standard shifted to require one reading specialist per five hundred and fifty students in grades K through five, and one reading specialist per eleven hundred students in grades six through eight. This adjustment reflects the significant demands of the Virginia Literacy Act, in addition to the already critical roles these specialists play in our schools. Although we did receive funding through the All-In Initiative, these funds do sunset. So these positions were not funded with the All-In Grant, but are funded with local operating funds. The cost of this investment is $2.4 million. As outlined on the slide, reading specialists are essential in supporting teachers who deliver high-quality, evidence-based reading and writing instruction to our students, as you can see from the responsibility listed on the slide, which I will give you a moment to review. In summary, the total cost of the additional support Virginia Beach City Public School provides to benefit our students and families amounts to approximately $45.2 million. This underscores why the J-Lock study has recommended transitioning to a new funding model. The current model, based on outdated SOQ standards, places an increasing financial burden on localities to adequately support schools. So when we look at the rationale for staffing above SOQ, and I've mentioned several things as I went through each of those positions, state funding in the Commonwealth has long been and continues to be a critical challenge for all school divisions. Virginia Beach City Public Schools has consistently invested substantial resources to ensure high-quality teaching and learning. It has often been said that Virginia Beach City Public Schools offers students and families a private-school-level education within a public school setting. The additional positions funded beyond SOQ requirements, along with those not included in SOQ, allow us to meet individual learning needs of students by addressing diverse learning styles, providing small-group instruction, and delivering targeted interventions. By investing in additional staff and support staff, we create an inclusive environment where all students, regardless of their strengths or challenges, have the resource and opportunities to thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. These positions are also vital in supporting staff and ensuring the success and well-being of both students and teachers. Whether focused on academic support, administrative efficiency, student well-being, community engagement, crisis management, or technology integration, these roles are vital to maintaining a strong educational framework. They also play a critical role in ensuring school safety through emergency preparedness, crisis management, security monitoring, and the prevention of bullying and violence. Trained staff and conflict resolution and an active supervision contribute to a safe and supportive learning environment. Additionally, resources like academic support staff, counselors, social workers, behavior specialists, school psychologists, and visible authority figures such as school resource officers foster a productive, welcoming, and positive educational atmosphere. By investing in these areas, Virginia Beach City Public Schools cultivates an environment where all students feel safe, supported, and motivated to reach their full potential. These roles underscore the importance of a well-rounded and adequately staffed support system to maintain the smooth operation of a K through twelve educational environment. Virginia Beach City Public Schools continues to outperform the state in literacy and math, a success attributed to our commitment to robust school support. Beyond our comprehensive schools, we offer multiple academies, a gifted school, a charter school, career and technical education opportunities, dual enrollment courses, Spanish immersion, and advanced placement options. This commitment to academic excellence and diverse learning pathways comes at a cost, but ensures that our students are prepared to be meaningfully employed, enlisted, or enrolled in higher education. This slide offers a snapshot of the unfunded mandates that were costed out for fiscal year 2025, totaling approximately $36 million. You should have received a copy of the detailed unfunded mandate document for reference. As noted at the top of this slide, unfunded mandates are requirements imposed by higher levels of government, such as federal or state, on lower entities such as local governments or school districts without providing adequate funding to cover the associated costs. Examples of these mandates include compliance with specific educational laws, safety regulations, or administrative processes. This slide provides an overview of the budget reductions implemented for fiscal year 2025 as part of the effort to balance the budget following the city's two-cent reduction in the real estate tax rate. I've mentioned some of these already. To offset the loss of funding, we eliminated the funding for school bus replacements, extended the maintenance cycle for landscape services provided by the city, and reduced the general maintenance line item. To address the additional impact of the real estate tax reduction, we reduced funding for temporary employment agreements in central office, cut Fed tutoring and unified insights, which are contractual services, eliminated eight point five central office positions, and made further staffing reductions at the school level listed on the bottom of this slide. The total cost associated with these reductions was approximately $5.6 million. A couple of weeks ago, I presented this information to you, and I'd like to revisit it before we proceed with the rest of the presentation. This slide illustrates the school division's revenue sources and compares the final amended fiscal year 2025 budget to the governor's proposed budget for fiscal year 2026. The first column shows you the adopted fiscal year 2025 budget, and this is what the school board approved prior to the final state budget. The second column is our amended fiscal year 2025 budget, which included additional state revenue from the state's final budget. The third column is our projected fiscal year 2026 revenue by source. The last column shows you the variance between our amended fiscal year 2025 budget and the most recent estimate of revenue sources for fiscal year 2026. You can see that we are showing an overall increase in revenue, approximately $30.1 million, with the majority of the increase coming from the city through the revenue-sharing formula. It is worth noting that projected increases from our amended fiscal year 2025 budget for state revenue are approximately $4.3 million, and state sales tax shows an increase of $5.4 million. This nets out to be an overall increase from the state from our amended fiscal year 2025 budget of approximately $9.7 million. As we continue to plan and balance our fiscal year 2026 budget, it is crucial to clearly define our budget priorities to effectively allocate resources in alignment with the school board's goals. Your guidance on where we should focus our efforts, whether it's enhancing compensation to attract and retain talented staff, increasing investments in educational allowances, allocating funds for Pago and CIP, or support for students with diverse needs, will greatly inform our planning and balancing process. Based on if we are accurate in identifying school board priorities drives the proposed spending of new revenues to balance the budget. Considerations should be given to compensation increases to both pay scales, increases in the employer health insurance contributions due to the increasing utilization, and the double-digit increase in claims, offset by slight reductions in VRS rates, outside the base requests from departments, and investments into the capital improvement program. So what is next? We would appreciate any input or feedback from the school board by Sunday, February 2nd. Our deadline to draft the superintendent's estimate needs, known as the SEON, is February 4th, in preparation for the presentation to the school board on February 11th. Following the February 11th presentation, we will have three budget workshops scheduled ahead of the budget approval on March 11th. And now I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Freeman to provide information related to the capital improvement program.
Thank you. Actually, colleagues, I was going to ask, since the capital improvement presentation is probably a little meaty also, we have a hard stop at 5:30. If you would be okay with us adding this remaining piece of presentation to the information portion of the agenda, is anybody, everybody okay with that? All right. So does anybody have any questions about this so far?
Just a comment. If you could go back to the last slide. We want to make sure we've confirmed the school board priorities because we're going to be working over the next couple of weeks to develop the SEON. And so we took a stab at some areas we think that you're really focused on. And so we want to make sure that's accurate because we don't want to present you a SEON in two weeks and hear that, well, you really missed the mark. So if you want to have some discussion right now whether or not those representing the proposed spending represent generally where we are, that would be great.
And you're okay with people sending that via email or calling you by February 2nd? Is that correct?
It is, but of course, it'll be the preponderance of the will of the board versus eleven different focus areas, so.
Okay. Mr. Culpepper?
Two quick ones. Ms. Pate, your slide 15, column three, you said that was the, it says on my slide, it says SEON. You admit that was the estimate of resources, right, or estimates of revenue?
So it's really, we are, the SEON right now is based on the governor's proposed budget because that's all the information we have out of the state right now.
Okay. So for the time being, your SEON and your estimate of resources are one and the same?
One and the same.
Got it. The only other question for superintendent, the slide you just brought up, can you tell me what you described to me what increased educational allowances refers to?
So earlier, well, several years ago, the board took a stab at making our educational allowances, much like our salaries, competitive with our neighbors and their allowances for advanced degrees. And so there was a plan in place that we were executing small increments. We paused that last year because we didn't have the funds. And so one of the slides that Ms. Wood showed was if we wanted to get to complete that course of work that was started several years ago, it would be about $1.8 million.
Okay, so that's education allowances for staff?
For staff, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Malnig?
So for our new board members, this additional sheet that Ms. Pate gave us, the 2025 unfunded mandates, this is a nice addition to the actual one that shows our top ten or twelve. But I think we are pretty close to about $100 million right off the top for unfunded, or where are we?
Those are the ones that we were identifying, and that goes out to staff and senior staff for them to know what's in their areas and what we believe to be, so.
But it's a lot.
It's a lot.
Right off the top of our budget. So I think it's important also for the public to know that, like, it looks like our budget is this, but right off the top are the things that we have to pay for, that are mandated, but that we don't get money for. And it's a hefty, it's a hefty dollar amount.
Anyone else? Okay. Dr. Robertson, since you asked for some feedback, I'm going to give you my thoughts here at this time. I'm very invested in seeing how each increase in spending and our spending relates to student academic outcomes and achievement. I know that some of these are naturally tied to that, but that is my main focus here. So while I recognize that these are important things and they definitely tie into it, I would like to see how they tie into those items. Does anyone else have any thoughts? Okay. The time is 5:26 PM, and we will recess and return at 6:00 PM for the formal meeting. Thank you.